Time for a PRL break. Okay, we're good to go. We're live.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Welcome and thank you for tuning in to tonight's Planning Commission meeting. I am Marty Dahl, the Community and Economic Development Director for the City of Victoria. We value our residents and our community members, and even though our doors are temporarily closed as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, we want to make sure that our public meetings continue in an open and transparent manner. State statutes allow the city to conduct meetings by telephone, and the Victoria City Council recently took action to allow our council and our commission meetings to temporarily take place remotely during this pandemic emergency. As a result, we are temporarily modifying how we will receive public comment on Planning Commission items. During meetings that do not have a public hearing, comments should be sent to the Planning Commission electronically via email or using our online form. The form can be found at victoria.civicweb.net/portal under the Meeting Participation heading. Again, that's victoria.civicweb.net/portal. You can also email Senior Planner Paul Moretto at pmoretto@ci.victoria.mn.us. That is P-M-O-R-E-T-T-O at ci.victoria.mn.us. During future meetings that include a public hearing, we intend to provide the ability for those wishing to speak to do so via conference call. Tonight's meeting does not include a public hearing, so there's no dial and number. Those of you watching us live online or on MediaCom Channel 8, please beware of, be aware of the following: A quorum of our Planning Commission members, as well as our presenters, are participating in this meeting remotely. For tonight's meeting, we also have a potential quorum of the Lakes and Water Quality Advisory Committee on the line participating. We're broadcasting this meeting live and are recording it so it can be viewed on demand. There is up to a one-minute delay from the live meeting to the online and cable broadcast. And finally, different from our usual process, all actions of the Planning Commission will be taken by a roll call vote. This is a new process for all of us, so thank you for your patience and constructive feedback as we work through this unprecedented situation. And with that, I will turn it over to Chair Stensland.
Thank you, Marty. Good evening, everyone. I will now officially call this meeting to order. I'd like to thank the members of the Victoria Lakes and Water Quality Commission Advisory Committee who are participating in this call. We're going to have a great discussion later. Prior to that, we have a couple items of business to get to. So just hang for a few minutes and we'll get to that discussion. First order of business tonight is to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting. Members of the Planning Commission, before I ask for a motion, will you please state your name when moving and seconding? Seconding, commissioners, is there a motion to adopt the final agenda?
This is during more, I motion to adopt the final agenda.
Thank you, Laura. Is there a second?
John Brownlee, I second.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the name? I just broke up a little bit there.
John Brownlee, I second the motion.
Thank you, John. I have a motion made by Commissioner Moore, then seconded by Commissioner John Brownlee. I'm now going to take roll call vote. Commissioner Brownlee.
Aye.
Commissioner Coon.
Aye.
Commissioner Gar.
Aye.
Commissioner Iverson. Commissioner Iverson. I'm getting a breakup on that. Can anyone confirm that that was an aye?
No, not yet.
Okay.
Can he, can he vote by typing into the chat window if he's having a microphone?
Iverson, can we try one, try one additional time?
There it is.
That was the aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
And Commissioner Swartning? One more time, Commissioner Swartning?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Stensland, aye. Thank you. Motion carries. Second order of business tonight is to adopt the minutes from our January 7, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. Once again, when I ask for a motion, please state your name when moving and seconding. Commissioners, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
This is John Brownlee. To approve the minutes.
I heard John Iverson first. Commissioner Iverson, thank you for your motion. Is there a second?
It's John Brownlee, I second it.
Thank you, Commissioner Brownlee. I have a motion made by Commissioner Iverson. I have a second made by Commissioner Brownlee. I'm now going to take a roll call. Commissioner Brownlee?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Coon?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Gar?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Iverson?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Swartning?
Aye.
Thank you. And Commissioner Stensland also, aye. Motion is approved. Motion passes. So now we're going to move on to our discussion item. First item is item 3.1, Minnesota Department of Natural Resources Shoreland Regulations Presentation. First part, first item for the discussion, Minnesota Department of Natural Resources Shoreland Regulations Presentation. For those watching or listening to this meeting at home this evening, please note there is no action being taken on this item. This is simply a presentation to provide background to the Planning Commission about shoreline regulations as we look to update the city's shoreline ordinance. Any potential future changes to this ordinance will come before the Planning Commission at a later date and include a public hearing, which will be noticed well in advance. Commissioners, to help reduce the instances of us talking over one another, I'd ask you to please keep track of your questions during the presentation. We'll go through them at the end. I'll prompt you for your questions. I'll now turn things over to the Senior Planner, Paul Moretto, to provide some additional information and introduce our guest presenter from the DNR. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair Commissioners. Today, we have a special presentation by the DNR. Before we transition into that presentation, I'd like to go over just a few high-level notes to talk about. The City of Victoria is currently in the process of reviewing and modifying our shoreline district regulations, which is Section 22 of the zoning code. This is all in preparation to update our regulation ordinances. Currently, our shoreline ordinance does not meet some of the standards of the DNR and wish to be more in line with those. Staff is working to develop and update the shoreline ordinance as it satisfies the DNR standards while also maintaining regulations and requirements that are specific to the City of Victoria. Today, we have a special presentation. This is meant to set the stage for the update and provide discussion items for the Planning Commission and the Lakes and Water Quality Advisory Committee. Free staff has invited a representative from the DNR to present on this topic of shoreline regulation. This presentation is meant to be an introductory course on the background and importance of shoreline regulation and how these regulations are meant to balance and protect natural resources with economic development. We have with us Dan from the DNR, who will spend 20 to 30 minutes on a presentation and additional 10 to 20 minutes for questions and discussions. This topic was also identified as part of our work plan goal for both the Planning Commission and the Lakes Water Quality Advisory Committee. With that, I'll hand it off to our friends at the DNR for our presentation. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. This is Dan. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Okay. I am going to share my screen and I'm hoping that you can see a screen of mine.
Yes.
All right. I'm getting, I'm getting there. All right. So, does it, does it look like you're looking at a PowerPoint presentation now?
Yes.
Great. All right. So, this presentation, I think Marty saw a couple months ago and asked us to come to your Planning Commission to do it. And so here we are. I've sort of abbreviated this a bit to focus a bit more on some of the things you asked about. And what I thought I would do is pause at certain points along the way for some questions rather than wait to the very end. So we'll see how that goes here. Hopefully, my voice is coming through fairly well. I noticed earlier some of the voices were very choppy, so could someone just give me an indication as to how well my voice is coming across?
Dan, this is Marty. You're coming across very clear.
Excellent. All right. Well, so here, this is our Shoreline Basics Presentation. This is something that we do a few times a year for our training workshops that we do around the state. The purpose of this particular workshop is to help you understand why shoreline standards are important. Secondly, we hope that this understanding helps you improve the ability to explain why standards are important to members of the public or other elected and appointed officials. And ultimately, we hope this understanding helps improve local administration. So today, we're going to cover a few things. First of all, take a short trip down history lane. The shoreline program just celebrated 50 years, so there's, there's a very interesting history there. Then we'll move on to a bit about why shoreline protection is important, a little bit about the basics of how the program actually operates between the state and local government. We also want to cover about the ordinance review and approval process. I know the city may be updating its ordinance in the near future, and so this is the process we would use for that. And then there's also an interest in how we, the standards deal with planned unit developments. And then lastly, this idea of flexibility. The city has previously asked for some flexibility from the strict interpretation of the state shoreline rules, and we have had some discussions with, about that in the past year and have come up with sort of a conceptual way that that could work to address some of the city's particular needs. So, so that's where we're going. And I'll stop after each section here to see if there's any questions or comments. So, first of all, let's take a trip down history here, lane here. Back in the 1960s and 70s in Minnesota and many places in the country, there was an enormous post-war boom economy with a lot of leisure time and housing growth and road construction. There was a huge interest in lake life in Minnesota especially, and a lot of movement towards buying cabins and homes in lake country. And so we started seeing a huge growth spurt. There was a lot of concern about that rapid unplanned growth that frankly was poorly planned. I guess that's the definition of unplanned, but a lot of small lots, not enough room for septic systems, just a lot of very poor development around the lakes and shoreline areas. And so this sort of set the stage for a growing interest in developing standards in the state. We had a lot of newspaper articles from all corners of the state, just kind of capturing the strain, the density, the, you know, kind of excessive development that was going on. And, you know, keep in mind, this was also part of the era of growing environmentalism at a national level. There was, you know, the Federal Wild and Scenic Rivers Act was passed in 1968 that established federal protection for rivers of outstanding quality, including the St. Croix here. The state of Minnesota built on this act by designating the Lower St. Croix a wild and scenic river. And we had our first Earth Day in 1970, the Clean Air Water Act of 1972, the Minnesota Wild and Scenic River Act in 1973, and our Critical Areas Act of 1973 also. But the Shoreline Act came along in 1969 and actually had its roots in Corwin County. A graduate student at the University of Minnesota was interested in looking at seasonal development in lake country. He did a graduate thesis on this, and that thesis caught some attention at the legislature and the Legislative Commission on Minnesota Resources decided to fund an expansion of this study statewide, and that was done through the University of Minnesota Geography Department. And that study was widely read at the legislature and the governor at the time and led to the Shoreline Management Act. And that was passed in 1969. Governor Lavander, a Republican, supported this bill and pushed it and had bipartisan support. I know that sort of sounds odd in this day and age, but that's what happened in 1969. And there were a lot of things that came together. First of all, the builders in the state supported this because they wanted some consistency in, in development standards around the state. There was some very large businesses, mainly out of the Twin Cities, that supported this environmental initiative. And just the year before, Wisconsin passed its own Shoreline Management Act. And, you know, with the nearby state in a similar sort of landscape of lakes and rivers, doing this made it easier for Minnesota to do that. And so in addition to the Shoreline Management Act, we also passed the Flood Plane Management Act in the same year, as well as the Scientific and Natural Areas Act. And so the Shoreline and Flood Plane Management Act are very similar in that they are administered through local government zoning ordinances. The SNA Act is a program that the DNR operates. It's a large number of, of tracts of land throughout the state that have scenic and scientific qualities to them, and they're managed through the DNR. So, so just briefly, the Shoreline Act, its preamble is something that many of you would probably recognize. The Act says that it's in the interest of public health, safety, and welfare to provide guidance for the wise development of shorelands. You probably recognize those words. They are typical planning jargon for justifying zoning ordinances, comprehensive plans, a wide variety of land use controls. Those go back to the starting period of planning and zoning in the early 20th century. And the reason I bring that up is that this act, the Shoreline Management Act, was designed from the get-go as a land use planning and zoning act. It was intended to be implemented through local governments from the very beginning. And so there are two pieces to this act or two purposes bulleted here. One is just talking about preserving and enhancing the quality of surface waters, and the second talks about preserving the economic and natural environmental values of shoreline. And it's that second piece that speaks to the balancing act that we try to emphasize, and it has been this way since the very beginning. The idea is that it's a management act, and it's intended to allow development in balance with natural resource preservation. So sometimes we get the balance. Well, sometimes we don't, but that's where the program has got some built-in flexibility to adjust the standards for different parts of the state. So, just a brief history about state and local land use relationship. Most of you probably know that local land use authority is derived from the state. The state has the power and delegates it through planning enabling statutes for cities. It's found in Minnesota statute 462 and for counties in statute 394. But also, the state limits that authority when it comes to shoreline. And so both of those statutes specifically limit authority in shoreline to ensure that they're consistent with the Water Resources Act, which is where the act is found in 103F. So, just a little bit of a connection there. As I mentioned from the very beginning, this was designed as a land use and zoning act. So, and I think the reason to, why we think about it this way, or why it's so important is that in Minnesota, we have a lot of water. These are statewide resources for the benefit of all citizens and their public waters. And because the state has a compelling interest in protecting these public waters for the use enjoyment of all citizens, it's risen to the, the level of a statute for managing development around these lakes and rivers in, in a way that balances property rights with the state's interest in protecting these resources for all. So, and this graphic here sort of illustrates sort of these connections. You know, the, we speak to lakes and rivers having recreational value, aesthetic value, and economic value. But at its core, those values are driven by water quality and habitat. And if we don't take steps in our development to protect water quality and habitat, we can easily miss the mark in, on each of those values and ultimately results in a lower quality of life. This is just a brief history of the regulations and statutes. Of course, it all started in 1969. Shortly thereafter, the very first shoreline rules were developed for counties. The act was amended in 1973 to include cities, and then the rules were adopted or there were new rules for cities. And those were in place for 13 years until 1989, when they were updated and applied to cities and counties in the same fashion. Prior to that, the 1970 and 76 rules for counties and cities were different. In 1989, they were all consolidated together. And, and that's the last time we've updated our rules. In two other intervals, there were some efforts to create some new standards. In 2005 and '07, a group of about six or seven counties in the central lakes area got together to create what they, what is known as the alternative voluntary standards, which were some standards designed specifically for the lakes region. And many of those standards were more strict and had more protection in gate, in meshed in them than the standard 1989 rules. And many counties have adopted those standards or taken pieces of them. In 2007 to '10, there was a large statewide effort to update the shoreline rules, but that effort did not make it through the final hoop. And so it failed. And so we still are working with the 1989 rules. So, before we go on with the rest of the material, I just want to make sure that you all know that the 1989 rules, the rules that we still are working with, were designed as part of a significant collaborative effort that was characterized by compromise among many stakeholders, which included counties and cities, real estate, interest builders, lake associations, resorts, and environmental groups. They weren't perfect. I guess no compromise ever is, but they were well-intentioned to address many commonly recognized problems. And so just wanted to let you know that, you know, the, the rules that we have went through a lot of hearings, a lot of public meetings, a lot of engagement along the way. They weren't just designed in a DNR office somewhere. So, so given that, you know, the rules are fairly old, and over time, since 1989, the size of homes has increased, the amount of, of impervious surface being desired, the style of landscaping has changed dramatically. And the current rules really didn't anticipate that or really weren't designed to address those issues. The rules also in 1989 were not designed to deal with the effects of rising water temperatures, you know, which warmer waters, along with phosphorus and other nutrients in the water increases. LJ Bloom, the dark color of LJ Bloom's attracts heat, heats up the water, and the cycle, cycle continues. And so we are seeing, you know, this sort of feedback loop increasingly on lakes. And the, the rules also were not deal, designed to deal with increasing precipitation or intense rainwater events. And so you just keep these sort of things in mind that even though we call these statewide minimum standards, they are old and they really don't address many of the problems that we're seeing around water bodies today. So, just one last part of this section here to keep in mind is that the purpose of the shoreline program is just more than managing water quality. A number of organizations or cities and counties think that, you know, it's just a stormwater management program, but it's, it's much more than that. It's really about protecting the sort of lakeshore character, protecting habitat and vegetation to contribute to the scenic quality that is a major part of our lakeshore experience. So, so with that, that is the, kind of the end of our, our history section. Anybody have any questions or, or comments about that?
This Terry Swartning, I just have a question, how you interact with the Minnehaha Watershed District?
Well, with regard to the shoreline program, there is, there is not any sort of ongoing regular interaction. Oftentimes, when cities in, within the district's boundaries have questions or issues around water quality or watershed management, sometimes that will result in a change to the shoreline ordinance, or sometimes, as in the case of Orno, just recently, they amended their ordinance to move some of the standards for dealing with land alteration out of their ordinance and into the rules or the governance structure of the, the watershed district. In their case, all sort of permitting around land alteration is done by the watershed district. And so it made sense for them to have the shoreline standards in their regulatory structure and not in the cities. So it's sort of in a piecemeal basis or, you know, ad hoc basis?
Thank you.
Any other thoughts or questions?
Yeah, as I understand it, the DNR still is the responsible entity, but delegates certain functions to the watershed district and treats it as a, as a contract for different, in different approaches to how, you know, how it's managed within that watershed. Correct?
Well, you know, I'm not sure about that. It, you know, the DNR is a big organization, and in some cases, maybe if it has to do with permitting, that's possible. When it comes to say the shoreline management, by and large, our relationship is still directly with cities and counties. The Orno example I gave is sort of one of a rare instance where the, the sort of authority for doing a certain element or component of the shoreline standards has been delegated to the watershed. But, but that's pretty rare, I think. has been delegated to the watershed, but, but that's pretty rare, I think.
Well, the watershed does the reviews of all of the motions by developers and owners for making alteration on their property, how riprap was done, what levels, you know, what, what elevations they can be set to and so forth.
Yep. Yeah, exactly. In those situations, those are, that's right in the wheelhouse of a watershed organization. And so especially when you're dealing with rip rap or land alteration at the edge or elevations, those things make sense.
Don't, don't they also can control the culverts and, and, you know, and other things that allow a lake to drain and, and for the water to go down the, down through the watershed?
They, they do in many cases. I think what's important to understand that the shoreline program is a really, for the most part, a land use program. Land use authority for the most part is with cities and counties. And so this is a zoning program. When you deal with issues below the water level or below is what we call the ordinary high water level, that's usually the authority of the DNR directly through permitting programs. And many times we might delegate some of that authority to a watershed organization. So when you're dealing with, you know, actual water levels or moving water around or, you know, dredging or altering the course or lake bed, that's a permitting issue that the DNR or a delegated watershed authority might be involved in directly. That's a separate area from the shoreline program that we're talking about today.
But the, but the, but the runoff that comes from the impervious surfaces and you know, what some of the false phosphor runoffs and so forth can be from the, from the land use.
Absolutely.
Overall administered by the watershed district?
Yeah, well, like that's, there was some overlap there with the shoreline program because the shoreline regulations do to regulate the amount of impervious surface within shoreline. And, and there might be a little overlap with what the watershed district standards are in that area.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other questions or thoughts at this point? Right. Well, let's go into a bit more detail about why shoreline standards are important. First of all, you know, vegetation management and stormwater, land alteration and septic setbacks all help to limit nutrient flow as we just talked about into lakes and rivers. And so the, the program tries to regulate these issues to minimize the runoff of, of nutrients. We know from many studies and just intuition that there's a relationship between water quality and property value. And a study by Bemidji State University found, you know, this relationship that a three foot decrease in water clarity resulted in a twenty-two percent decline in property value. And this is information that I'm sure most of you are aware of, but you know, as you move from a developed, I mean, a completely undeveloped landscape to a developed landscape, you know, you see increasing amounts of runoff phosphorus and sediment. And so just even off of sort of an undeveloped piece of land, you have a little bit of that. Once you develop a little bit more like this seasonal cabin, you still have small amounts of runoff and phosphorus, but sediment inputs to the Lake River increase. And then when you get into some very large contemporary development, you get a significant amounts of sediment running off into our waters. And of course sediment in and of itself is a pollutant, but it also carries a phosphorus with it as well. So these are some of the reasons why we are concerned about this type of development around our lakes or rivers and how we manage that. So the shoreline rules definitely deal with lot size and width standards. It's probably one of the most common ways they manage it. Of course, these, these standards are intended to preserve economic values and prevent overcrowding, especially on sensitive environmental areas. And the standards are intended to protect property rights with the common good of protecting the state's waters. You know, this is a bit of an exaggeration, this, this scenario here, but back in the sixties, there was just sort of rampant unplanned development. And that's one of the reasons that we, we developed these standards. The shoreline standards also have structure setbacks to help protect properties against loss. And obviously we have some very dynamic rivers in the state. And we've been seeing a lot of movement of rivers with the greater amounts of precipitation in recent years. It's not to say that the shoreline standards are going to protect every structure, but, but they do help. And so this is one of the key reasons we have the standards is to protect the economic values of our investments. And then lastly, it's really intended to preserve the natural values around our lakes and rivers. In a perfect world, you know, we might have this, but, but we have to address and accommodate for development. And so here is sort of my idea of what a nice balance is between economic and natural values, sort of a good balance there. And as we just talked about here, we know that what happens on the land happens in the watershed and and in all that land use output flows right into our lakes and rivers. And so, you know, the question is, are we managing our, our land in a wise way to really limit our impacts to lakes and rivers? And so this is kind of the question I always like to ask people is, you know, what is the, the single best strategy or the one thing that you think would be the most important governing or directing the wise development of shorelands? And this is, this is actually a question for you. So if anybody wants to chime in on this, that would be great.
Managing runoff.
All right. Managing runoff. Any particular way that you might?
The runoff?
Well, there's all sorts of different ways between rain gardens and, and I don't know, but it depends on what type of land it is. Cause if you're going from an agricultural land where there's drain tile going into a ditch and then out down into the lake, any type of development is going to improve that.
That's, that's true.
So it's kind of depends on what you're working with to start out with, but, and maybe some way for motivation for individual homeowners to manage the runoff from their property along the lakeshore in particular. I don't know. It's, it's a pretty wide range of things that can be done with runoff.
Sure, sure. Any, anybody else have any ideas on that?
One approach is just educating people a little bit more about, I mean, just as you're doing today with us. Um, you know, there's a lot that I'm not up to speed on in regards to all the negative impacts to our environment, but I think once people understand that more completely, they're going to ask questions and they're maybe be more proactive and also be more cognizant of how they develop their homes and improvements they make on their homes that would be mindful of this in advance.
Great. Well, one of the things that I think is sort of the one, you know, silver bullet, it doesn't necessarily always work with agriculture, but you know, our little mantra here about keeping it natural. You know, if we can keep the shoreline area filled at least with some natural vegetation, that's a great way of managing some runoff. As long as it's not an excessive amount, but for most residential applications and many commercial applications, this is really ideal. It provides habitat, intercepts, slows, infiltrates water. And it also adds the scenic beauty of, of our shoreline areas. So this is sort of our, our key message here. All right. So before we move on to the nuts and bolts of the program, just any further thoughts on what we just talked about in terms of, of why it's important to protect the shoreline areas?
Well, earlier in your presentation, you mentioned a couple of them, density being one. Another being making sure there's adequate block space, being able to handle sewage or septic. And, you know, usages of chemicals that might be a present on a property that might be different commercial standpoint that might have parking lots and other pieces versus a residential.
Right. Yep.
Zoning obviously comes into play in terms of what's going on. And then I just think an overall consciousness of what is the watershed and the water moves. And where you are in a shoreline, it can certainly impact what's going on, not only on the water body that you're on, but downstream from you.
Yep. Yeah, it's, it's really important to keep that watershed perspective. You know, the shoreline program really just covers a very narrow band. Somebody else saying something there? I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, I'll, I'll just move on to the next piece of this program here. So briefly, the, the program works in sort of a delegated method. We have a statute that establishes the shoreline management act out of that statute or rules that were created to support that statute. And then those rules are implemented and administered through local zoning ordinances. And to, to get there, the DNR provides model ordinances to help local governments expedite the adoption and administration. And we also provide administration oversight for the whole program. And so this is very similar to how the floodplain works, floodplain program works as well. Just to summarize, there is in addition to one oh three F, which is the shoreline management act requiring cities and counties to submit ordinances to DNR for review. There are a few other things that are important to note. Another statute four one four requires cities to adopt an ordinance whenever they annex land containing shoreline. So it sort of helps to catch cities that maybe haven't done that before and aren't aware of it, but as they grow and expand, maybe they grow and expand into shoreline areas. And so they have to adopt an ordinance at that point. And then lastly, three ninety four requires townships to take on shoreline zoning and to be as restrictive as the county that they're in if they do that. So, but that's only for townships that take on zoning. If most townships in the state are more unhappy, just maybe with road maintenance. But over time, more and more townships do seem to be taking on this authority. And so the statute covers them as well. So statewide, we have a number of public waters that are in, in the shoreline program. It includes public waters that are more than twenty-five acres in counties or ten acres in cities. That includes wetlands classified as three, four and five. Rivers and streams that drain more than two square miles. And all of these waters that meet these definitions are given a classification. And the classification is used to create lot size and structure and septic setback standards. And the idea being that some lakes are much more sensitive to human impacts than others. And in this case, the any or natural environment lake is the most sensitive to human impacts and has the strictest standards. The general development or GD lake are usually bigger and deeper and are less sensitive in their standards than are less strict and the recreational RD lakes falling in the middle have standards that also then fall in the middle. The shoreline boundary is a thousand feet from the ordinary high water level of lakes and three hundred feet from the ordinary higher rivers and streams or the floodplain boundary, whatever's greater. These standards were sort of borrowed from Wisconsin back in nineteen sixty nine. And that's, that's the way to make sense of this is simply what Wisconsin did at the time. And, and we just did the same and it's been like that ever since. The shoreline standards cover a few basics that you're probably aware of. Lot size being probably one of the most key, but also structure setbacks from the water as well as bluffs. There's a variety of standards managing where and how vegetation is cut. There are standards around erosion and sediment control and, and impervious surface standards. And so together, these are sort of the core of the shoreline program. There are many more standards than these, but those really sort of get down to sort of a lot of details, but these are the most significant ones that have the greatest protection impact. And as far as implementing the program, you know, the DNR is a large statewide agency. Your first contact is what we call regional staff or an area hydrologist. They serve counties and cities in a geographically dispersed area. They're your first point of contact for reviewing local ordinance amendments. And they might comment on variances or conditioning use permits or PUDs that go through a public hearing process. I work out of the central office and I support our regional staff as they support you. And what we do at the central office is we develop regulations if that's needed. That's not possible anymore with a shoreline program, but we do develop model ordinances and keep those updated from time to time. We provide training and we coordinate legal and legislative action. You know, if the legislature is taking some action that might affect the program, I might be involved with that. So that's, that's our role. And then, then your role is to adopt and administer the ordinances and hopefully educate and explain the provisions to your public. You hold public hearings and you make decisions on a wide variety of, of applications. And the most important thing you can do is to keep us in the loop as you make those decisions by notifying us. Their ordinance indicates that you need to notify us 10 days before a public hearing and 10 days after a decision. And the 10 days before is at least our minimum notification to comment on something if we have time to. But for big projects and you, and if you want our comments, we hope that you would give us more than 10 days to do that. So. That's kind of the end of that section, dealing with the structure of the program and, and how we work with the local governments. So any questions or thoughts or discussion here?
Sorry to kind of monopolize things. So if all you again, can you expand a little bit on the ordinary high water level and the interface with FEMA? Because I don't know how well that's understood within our planning commission, some of our other people here.
Well, the ordinary high water level is a DNR metric for determining our jurisdiction, our jurisdiction for, you know, permits for water or affecting the water, dredging in the water, removing aquatic vegetation in the water. This, that's our area of jurisdiction. So if you're doing anything below the ordinary high, that requires a DNR permit. If it's above the ordinary high, it's on the land. And that's primarily local government's authority for making decisions through their zoning ordinance or other regulatory controls they might have in place. You mentioned FEMA and FEMA doesn't, I think necessarily use the ordinary high. They have floodplain maps that identify areas of, you know, the hundred year flood event or the five hundred year flood event. They identify location of a floodway, which is where floodwaters move and the floodplain area. and the floodplain area, which is beyond the floodway. And there are different development standards in these areas, but they aren't necessarily related to the ordinary high number. That's really a DNR number used for identifying our jurisdiction below the, you know, below that for water permits and above that for land use permits.
But FEMA has come through and mapped all of the lakes and tried to identify where these flood areas. Certainly that has influence on what goes on with the ordinary high water level and making sure that the, the natural habitat and so forth are not disturbed. Even though the DNR is ultimately responsible for that.
Sure, yeah, the, the FEMA has in your area, I think they have, I, I don't work directly with that program, but I believe that you have been mapped. And for areas that haven't been mapped, then there is a regulation in the shoreline standards that says all structures need to be at least three feet above the highest known water level or ordinary high water level, whichever is higher. But your floodplain map and insurance study would, in your case, provide far more details about where those flood risks are than sort of that simple standard in the shoreline program.
Another point that if you could expand on a little bit, you talked about the DNR being involved when there's annexations. And that this city is going to have annexations of, of, you know, properties and that had been in different part of the county. Some of that has been agricultural land and I think the intended use would clearly be that we would be changing it to residential and commercial. Can you comment at all about what the city should be looking at as they go through that process?
All right.
Coordination with the DNR and other agencies?
Sure, sure. So for cities that already have a shoreline ordinance, the, the key thing that you need to be aware of is just making sure when you annex land around new lakes and rivers, that those lakes and rivers are identified in your ordinance. Since in, in most cases you have an ordinance that is compliant. In your case, I think you're still trying to figure out how to apply the shoreline PUD standards. But beyond that, I, I'm pretty sure that most of the rest of your ordinance is compliant. So you would just apply your standards to the annexed area with the caveat that you'd want to make sure you added the names and the identification numbers for those new water bodies that are included in the annexed area and add those into your shoreline ordinance. Your shoreline ordinance contains a list of all the covered water bodies within your boundaries. And so when your boundaries expand, you just want to make sure you add the new lakes and rivers that are included in that annexed area.
This, this is Marty, if I can jump in just really quickly, that is our intention. So right now there are a number of the lakes that are in the future annexation area that are not listed in the ordinance. So that is, that will be part of this update process as well as, as listing those lakes that are in the ultimate city boundaries into that ordinance.
And then you did list the, you know, what, what the requirements are for getting the DNR involved. And you're starting to, you know, to work through this process of approval, the 10 days before public hearings and so forth. But ideally, where would you like to be in the process when, when some of these things are being done? And there's, it looks like there'd be consideration of a PUD or other things. What, where in the process would you like to be involved to give you adequate time to study it?
Well, if for a complicated PUD, you know, it'd be nice to be involved at least 30 days before your public hearing. So, you know, we can make sure that, you know, the, the developers provided certainly the, the needed information to conduct an analysis. And that analysis is done in a way consistent with, with the shoreline rules require. And that gives us time to get some feedback to the developer and maybe get some additional information. In the meantime, if it's not clear how they're addressing certain issues. So 30 days would be, you know, ideal for a complicated project for, you know, a fairly simple variance decision, you know, that's maybe something like a variance to a structure setback or something like that. 10 days is usually fine. We don't, we don't have to add though, we don't necessarily comment in all decisions you make. It, it really has to do with how the priority, you know, how big of a, you know, development issue is it in terms of our priorities? And do we have the staff time at that particular point in time to actually look into it? Any, any other follow on questions to that or new ones? Okay, well, we can always come back to those two. Um, so I was asked to also talk about our ordinance review process. And I think this is important because the city, I think, is still hoping to make some amendments to your ordinance. And we have a five step process. Not all of these steps are required, but if you're going through a complicated process, we certainly encourage you to do this. Step one is simply just to let us know in advance. And if it's a complicated ordinance amendment process, we'd like to know at least a month ahead of time. And you've been doing that in the past, whenever you're starting to make headway on that, so that's working nicely. Step two is really submitting a preliminary ordinance amendment to us so that we can sort of look at it ahead of time. And there's no public meeting scheduled. We can have some discussion about it. Again, that's optional. Step three is, is the required step. We offer a conditional or provide a conditional approval of an ordinance. And we, we hope that you do that before a public hearing because we would like to be able to give you conditional approval before you go to a public hearing. That way our comments are part of the public record. And the idea is that if we give you conditional approval, that means it's basically ready to go. And any changes beyond that, we would want to look at before step five, which is the adoption by the, by your city council. So sometimes changes, of course, are made at public hearings. And many times those changes are fine as long as they don't reduce, you know, the, the, the standards. But oftentimes, you know, it ends up improving the standards too. And so we, we like to see that as well. We have our webpage, which goes into a lot more detail about this whole ordinance amendment review process. You can click on each of these little buttons here under each of the steps for more information and download various forms within each of those steps. So that's, that's sort of an administrative task that planners usually get involved with, not, not necessarily planning commissions. So there's that. And then I think the second to the last thing here was we wanted to talk about PUDs. And PUDs from a shoreline perspective at least are really a conservation design development. And there are two types. The typical residential PUD and then what we call a commercial PUD. But commercial in the shoreline lingo means resorts and campgrounds or hotels. It does not mean office and retail. If you want to do an office or retail project in the shoreline and call it a PUD and administer it under your, your normal PUD standards, that's fine. The only thing we would look at is, you know, is, are the setbacks appropriate? And is the impervious surface standards being met? So getting back to the shoreline PUD components though, this is generally treated as a conditional use. Some communities like to rezone to PUDs and that's fine. The concept that we want to make clear is that we, in thinking about this as a conditional use, we think of it this way, is that higher density is allowed in shoreline greater than the standard allotment under the standard lot and block minimum lot size approach to subdivision. So higher density is allowed as a conditional use if conditions are met. And the big conditions are a 50% open space that vegetation in the shore impact zone is protected. The shore impact zone, for those of you don't know, is that area right along the edge. And it's always 50% of the structure setback. And structure setback varies depending on lake classification. So that's a second condition. If you want some bonus density, you need to increase the setbacks of the structures even further. And facilities such as docks or beaches or other recreational amenities need to be centralized. So if you can meet those conditions, then you can have more units within the shoreline area than the standard rules allow. Also may point out that the rules are a bit complex and confusing. And so we're here to help. But the, the way, one of the reasons they're sort of complex is that you have to do this analysis by tier. And so you would create these tiers away from the water body. And then you break the tiers down into land that's suitable for development and land that's not suitable. And so wetlands and bluff areas are not suitable. And that's shown in yellow here. Green areas would be suitable. And we have some handy dandy Excel documents to help calculate these things here. You can sort of see here that you have it set up by tiers. And for each tier, you identify the total area in square feet. And then you break that into unsuitable and suitable areas. And the area that's left as suitable is, is the area in which you can calculate density in that step three. And in order to calculate density, you divide the minimum lot size into the suitable area to get basically a unit number, which is shown here in the red circle under step three. And then once you have base density, you can go on and calculate both bonus density. And the rules say that you can get a bonus density of 50% in the first tier, 100% in the second tier and 200% in the third tier. So you can ramp up the density pretty quickly as long as it's placed away from the water. And then you can kind of do some final calculations here to find out allowable units allowed in each tier with density. And then you just compare that to what, you know, the developer is proposing. Hopefully a developer is using this process to design their project from the get go. So when they come in the door with a plan, it's, it's very clear about complying with, with these density limits. So so that's pretty much it. The process is that we encourage cities and counties to really ask the developers to do the analysis properly. In the metro area, that's usually not too much of a problem. Once you get into greater Minnesota, it seems like standards, development standards change quite a bit. So we really have to emphasize this elsewhere. But we have spreadsheet templates and we're certainly happy to help you evaluate these projects or talk to the developer about additional information that might be needed to complete a proper review. So any questions about PUDs?
Again, I want to ask a question, sorry about that, but in regard to PUDs and with the idea of stormwater runoff protection, where does that come in the overall process? You just talked about density numbers, but didn't talk at all about the runoff aspects off of the property.
The, the actual density, or I'm sorry, the impervious surface limits in the shoreline rules for PUDs are unspecified. It's hard to believe that, but we generally recommend that communities at least limit the entire project to a 25%. That's the, the standard limit for, on a lot by lot basis. But since PUDs oftentimes have small lots and in return they have open space, they usually don't have a problem meeting that 25%. But that's sort of the standard we think is appropriate. It should be applied on the entire project, not on a lot by lot basis. The commercial PUD standards that apply to resorts and hotels and things do have a requirement to limit the, the impervious to 25% in each tier. But for residential PUDs, it, it is not specified. Okay. Okay, well, let's move on to the very last topic here, and that is just this idea of ordinance flexibility. The city has asked us for flexibility, and so this is very appropriate. But the rules were designed to build in flexibility for special situations. And here are some of the common situations for communities that have development prior to adopting an ordinance. Cities with central business districts and shorelands. And there's a whole variety of other things here. And we've been pretty flexible in how we interpret these special situations. Ideas, we want to sort of make this program work for communities. And so you know, we're open to a right, wide variety of ideas. And I, I don't know if this would be a good place here to, to talk about what we've been covered in the past. So Marty, I don't know, what do you think? Do you want to just go there now or?
Sorry, unmuting myself and pulling my camera back up. Yeah, I think, I think we can talk a little bit about some of the things that we've, we've discussed previously. Knowing that we've had, had some staff turnover and we're kind of taking a, a new look at everything. But I, I don't think there's, there's a problem talking about some of the things we've talked about.
Okay, well, I know that the, one of the key things we talked about were, the one that I found the most interesting was a desire or, let me see if I can pull this up here. So it just tears your city, hopefully you recognize the shape of your city. We have overlaid on this, the different types of lakes. And in purple are the recreational development lakes. Those are sort of the lakes in the middle category of sensitivity to development. And that's the bulk of what you have. You can see Lake Minnetonka here at the top, that's a general development lake. And then the light blue lakes are natural environment lakes. These are, are basically wetlands. And so the city wanted to some deviation on your conventional lot and block development. And they were proposing to reduce the minimum lot size on natural environment lakes, the, the blue lakes from 20,000 square feet to 15,000 square feet for non-repairing lots. And I think the idea was that you wanted to be able to have some smaller lot sizes to achieve some of the density that the city wanted. The city also wanted to have a maximum height of 35 feet instead of 25 feet under the shoreline rules. Wanted to have a maximum of impervious surface of 40% or commercial and industrial districts on all lakes instead of 25%. And also looking for a maximum pervious surface of 80% within the existing downtown area instead of 25%. So those are some of the, the big deviations for conventional lot and block development. So those are some of the the big deviations for conventional lot and block development. And they were also looking for you using only a 20, having only 25% open space instead of the required 50% open space for PUDs. And so in return, the city was suggesting that they would increase the lot size for conventional development on some non-sewered lakes. So going into marginal increases from 40,000 square feet up to a full acre on RD lakes and some GD lakes, I guess, basically Lake Minnetonka. And on sewered late lots, increasing the minimum lot size as well for not but basically repairing lots from some of the minimum standards. And and then also then on the PUD concept, the city was proposing that PUDs of land adjacent to lakes and rivers would require repair and buffers up 150 feet for commercial, I mean, for residential PUDs and 200 feet for commercial PUDs. And we found this trade off to be fairly attractive in our perspective, protecting that repairing area is is really important. And even though we have minimum standards for repairing development, it's very hard to police individual property owners in terms of how they manage their repairing lots. I'm sure we've all seen many lots where people mow directly down to the lake river and landscape it with riprap walls, patios, and all that kind of fun stuff. But the idea of the city creating 150 foot buffer on these properties around some of these lakes and dedicating that to the city for public use with trails is, we thought, a very nice trade off to make sure that these repairing areas are protected well into the future. So I don't want to get into the details in this setting here because, you know, these details were developed by previous administration and and you need to go through this process yourself here now to sort of figure out where you want to go. But we thought that was a very nice trade off. So I don't not sure if people are tracking with what I've been talking about. If you want me to repeat anything, let me know.
And and I think for the for the planning commission and for our lakes and water quality committee folks, I think just to piggyback off of that, as I mentioned, with some staff turnover and trying to regroup with figuring out where was this process left. You know, are the things that were being proposed, are they still things that we think are important? We thought the best way to kind of re kickstart that process was to just reengage all of you. And that was the reason for having Dan come and present to us tonight. So we are taking a look, just so you know, internally, we're looking at all of those things. And our intention is to come back to both of your groups with some suggested or proposed modifications. Some may be in line with some of the things Dan talked about. Some things may be slightly different. But then at that point in time, really have a an opportunity to look at, okay, here is where we think there might be some sense. What does the planning commission think about this? What are your questions? What are your concerns? Same with lakes and water quality folks. So that that is the outline we see for bringing this ordinance update forward. So we will be, we will be certainly bringing to you any any of these ideas or changes or thoughts that we have on the shoreline ordinance update at future meetings.
Again, Dick Holly, and I just wanted to make a comment. I and I know that when you were talking about resources, you didn't mention training. And I know the DNR has training on shoreline ordinances and so forth as that that they offer. And we've had some discussion on our lakes and water committee of, you know, encouraging the city to bring somebody in to conduct a course like that. So that those who are less familiar with what the regulations are and the rules are could attend a course and have the opportunity to learn a little bit more and to, you know, to ask questions so that they could clarify the the overall rules. So I don't know if that's something that you're willing to do from a DNR standpoint is to offer the training. But, you know, I know that it can be beneficial.
Well, I guess I'd be curious to, I mean, what we just went through is much of what we just went through is stuff that we do at our sort of regular local government staff trainings. Are you thinking that you want more detail or what would are you thinking?
Well, I've I've been exposed to both, you know, the regular training that I know is being set up for people who are developing ordinances as well as some of the FEMA training and others. So I just found it very beneficial and informative. And for those who may not have had any exposure to this prior, just even learning the terminology and the interface, I think can be very beneficial. So I thought it would be valuable for us to have that discussion. And if you had any other additional comments on it, just wanted to give you an opportunity to 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 explain exactly what the courses are and how they're laid out.
Well, the we do basically three shoreline focused trainings at these workshops. You saw much of what is called the shoreline basics training. And this was most focused on the details of the actual shoreline program. There are other special topics that I left out of today's presentation that deal with environmental review. Or going through the model ordinance to to name a couple. But separate from the basics training of which this was part of, we do a variance training and a a non-conforming properties workshop. And I'm forgetting one right now. I'll I'll let you know when it comes when it comes to my mind. So, but you know, if 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 your group can define clearly, you know, kind of sort of the things you're looking for. You know, this is a good venue too for doing this sort of thing. This sort of video approach. But we can talk to Marty later to to find out maybe more specifically what it is that you might like to see in addition. Let me see here. Oh, yes, the the program I couldn't remember had to do with higher standards. And that's a survey of standards that cities and counties across the state have adopted that are stronger than the minimum standards. And and that's something we always like to encourage communities to look at when there are many other ordinances to find sort of gaps or or areas where they maybe would like to ramp up their protection of shoreline development. So. Marty, oh, what are you thinking here about this topic today or anything else that you want to cover or?
No, I think from from my perspective, I I think this this was the things we wanted to go over tonight. So I think if you're you're concluded, I think if there's any additional questions, we can move on to that point.
I am concluded.
I have. I have one quick question. Because Victoria has so many small ponds, ponds that aren't even reflected on this this map. I'm assuming that even these small ponds that really collect the runoff from homes are are kind of managed by the same, these same principles, correct?
Well, I don't I don't know about that. The 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 lakes that are in color here are the lakes that are regulated under the shoreline program. If if they're not, if they're not represented by a color here, then they are not. Some of these, just looking at these, look like stormwater ponds to me. And those are, I'm sure, developed and designed to meet, it's probably the watershed district standards. Some of these might be wetlands that are not DNR wetlands, but WACO wetlands, Wetland Conservation Act wetlands. And those are regulated under a different set of standards. So, you know, I know that's one of the problems with water management in the state that there's a lot of jurisdictions with authority over different types of water bodies. But if you feel that there are some water bodies that you think need to be managed differently than they are today, or if you think that they could be better managed under a shoreline program, you can certainly have, you certainly have the discretion as a community to add those water bodies to your shoreline ordinance. And in many cases, communities around the state have done that. They've added water bodies that the DNR doesn't necessarily require protection under the shoreline program. So that's that's a higher standard, if you will.
The application where I see that we could get involved and just be a little more thoughtful is specifically the sediment inputs. You know, that is an area that that I think is going to become a growing concern. You know, a lot of these homes in Victoria have been built in the last, call it 15, 20 years. And so when these runoff ponds were created, it was to support these homes. And now these homes have been here quite a while, and many of these ponds, the sediment hasn't been removed. And so, you know, how is that managed?
Well, I'm not an expert in that area, but I I believe the Pollution Control Agency has standards for maintaining stormwater ponds. And that includes dredging or cleaning them out periodically to remove the sediments. I would think the watershed district would probably have a clear idea of what those standards are and under what timeframe ponds should be cleaned or sediment removed.
Commissioner Moore, this is Marty again. That is something that is on the radar of our public works staff. So I and in fact, I believe they do try to budget to get some of them dredged occasionally and periodically every year. So it is something that is on is on the radar of internal staff. I'm not entirely clear on the requirements related to that, but it is something that we are internally keeping an eye on.
This is Dick Holly again, and I can make a comment. When you look at most of these lakes, they are interconnected with wetlands that do ultimately flow down into Lake Minnetonka through Six Mile Creek. So there's a lot of interconnection of the lakes and the wetlands through our area. In terms of the the ponds and the collection for stormwater, when we've been doing development within Victoria, initially, very early in the process, the developers were the ones responsible for the ponds. And then the responsibility for cleaning them out was left with the homeowners associations in that area. Much, you know, recently, the majority of these ponds have been built out by the city. And it's the city's responsibility for keeping them clean. And I don't know that we have an adequate budget for doing that at this point. But the city engineer has been very much involved with the design of those ponds and understands the requirements and could probably provide our new city staff with an overview of that.
All right, are there any additional questions for Mr. Petrick? If not Chair Stenzland, I think that we can turn the meeting back over to you.
All right, all right, well, I will sign off then. Marty, well, and everyone else, thank you for participating and inviting us. And we can follow up later, Marty, to find out maybe what your next steps are in terms of flexibility or training. Thank you. Yep. All right. See ya.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Hey, guys, can you hear me? This is Scott.
Yeah, I hear you, Scott.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you.
I I was disconnected. I got back on. I don't know how that audio was for you, but I missed over half of what that last presentation was.
I suspect your Wi-Fi might be a little slow, Scott.
I'll try and continue. I am definitely having some audio. I know it is. It is out here on Marsh Lake Road. We we don't have a lot of options. Okay, well, we do. We do have one more item tonight, and I'm going to try and get through it. Our final item, item 3.2 is to appoint planning commission chair and vice chair. Is for a for the one upcoming year, one year term. To help streamline this process for the telephone meeting, meaning planning commission members were asked to submit nominations to city staff for chair, but vice chair prior to the meeting. These nominations were printed in the agenda for tonight's meeting. Nomination for chair were for Scott Stenzland. Commissioners, are there any additional nominations for chair? Didn't hear any, but I'm going to ask one additional time. Commissioners, are there any additional nominations for chair? I I will now ask for a motion. And a second for the nominee Scott Stenzland. Now I have a motion, please, in your name.
John Iverson, I would like to nominate Scott Stenzland for reelection.
John Brownlee, a second. Iverson, did I hear a second?
John Brownlee, I second nomination.
Thank you, Commissioner Brownlee. Motion has been made by John Iverson, seconded by John Brownlee. I am now going to take a roll call vote for Scott Stenzland for the position of planning commission chair. Commissioner Brownlee.
Aye.
Commissioner Coon.
Aye.
Commissioner Gar.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Iverson.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Swarting.
Aye.
And Commissioner Stenzlin.
Aye.
Motion carries. Scott Stenzlin will continue to be the chair. Thank you. We will now move on to the position of vice chair. Nominations for vice chair received were Laura Moore. Commissioners, are there any additional nominations for vice chair? I heard none. I will ask once again, commissioners, are there any additional nominations? We may have lost Scott.
Commissioner Stenzlin, this is Marty. Are you still on the line? Are you able to hear us? Let's let's put that on pause for just a minute and give him an opportunity to try and get reconnected. We can also send him the telephone number so he can at least get back in via audio.
While we're waiting for him, can we go through the motions and wait for him to vote?
Well. procedurally, I'm not exactly sure how we will do that without with our chair all of a sudden going absent.
Right now, we do have a motion on the floor. We have quorum still and we do have the vice chair available.
Right. Do I don't think we have a motion yet for doing this here. Do we have, do we currently have a motion to nominate Laura for vice chairman?
Paul, I don't believe we have a motion yet.
Okay, so as I saw. Can I step in as vice chair and make the motion before we vote?
Paul, does that work for you?
Yeah, I would say that's fine.
Okay, so is there a motion? Do I hear a motion to nominate Laura Moore for vice chair?
This is Mary Jo. I would like to nominate Laura for vice chair of our planning.
Thank you, Mary Jo. Is there a second?
This, John, I I'd like to say Laura's.
Okay, so the motion is seconded. Since we have a quorum, can we go ahead and go into the vote?
We have one.
Okay, see if we can get everybody here. Commissioner Coon.
Yay.
I. Commissioner Iverson.
Aye.
Commissioner Swarting.
Aye.
Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
Commissioner Gar.
Aye.
Hello?
Gar says aye.
I can hear you guys. Are you back? You back? Commissioner, Commissioner Brownlee, aye. Who are who are we still missing? Help me out here.
It sounds like Chair Stenzlin might be back, so you could ask him for a roll call vote as well.
Chair Stenzlin, we have a, we have a motion and a second for Laura Moore as vice chair. Are you there? Can you vote?
We may have lost him again.
Did we get everybody here who's on the line? Or did? I am back. Sounds like we have a a motion and a second. Yeah, Scott, we've got a motion, a second, a second, and I think everybody's voted but you. Okay, aye. Mr. Stenzlin says aye. Did we get everybody? Do we, did the roll call count, everybody?
Yep, we have confirmation.
Shut up.
Okay. Scott. So everybody, so I'll hand it back over to you. Everybody's voted and everybody's voted aye.
Thank you for your help on that, John.
How do we, how do we bless this new one?
I think you can say the motion carries.
Okay, so with all the votes counted, the motion carries. My last official act. All right.
So planning commissioners, I know it looks like Chair Stenzlin's still having issues. The only thing that was left on the agenda for today was I was going to give just a miscellaneous update on some of the development projects that are where things we're working on at the city. So very quickly, we are finishing up a feasibility study to look at things like street alignment, utility extension phasing, stormwater management for the thirteen and a half acre development. So we're still working forward on that. The Bethesda project, which many of you are aware of, is working with our building department. They are hoping to prior to the pandemic situation, they were hoping to have a model open in May and a full opening in June. We have not heard yet if that timeline is going to be changed at all, but that's what they are shooting for. We are also doing some additional studies on lift station location in our south. The area south of Marsh Lake, the Geshstock, Vogel and Welter areas previously, we've been in a situation where we would need to have almost have both of those properties develop at the same time because we were going to cite the lift station and the Welter property and the water and sewer coming from the north. We are looking at alternate locations for that lift station and potential alternate ways to bring water in so that we could potentially those projects could develop independently in the future. So so those are, those are some of the development related things. And then, as I think was mentioned earlier in the meeting, we do intend to having the Lake Town sixteenth preliminary plat before you at your next meeting on April 21st, which is the last Lake Town addition. So Lennar has been out there for quite a few years. This would be the the last piece of their property that they're looking to develop. And that's all I would have for a miscellaneous update. I don't know, Paul, if you have anything.
Nope, I think that that rounded up.
All right. So just procedurally, if Scott is still having problems, Commissioner Moore, as you have. Yes.
All right, I switched over to my phone for audio.
Perfect, much better.
Is everything taken care of with Laura? It sounded like it did.
Yeah, we're good.
Unanimous.
Well, of course. Awesome. So it sounded like you just got, I jumped on right at the end or it sounded like you got through the miscellaneous.
Yep.
Okay. Any miscellaneous from any of the commissioners? Hearing none, I will look for a motion to close tonight's meeting.
So moved, John Iverson.
Do I have a second? Jared Coon. I have a second from, I have a motion to close tonight's meeting from John Iverson, a second from Jared Coons. I'd like to take a roll call for closing tonight's meeting. Thank you in advance. Commissioner Brownlee.
Aye.
Commissioner Coon.
Aye.
Commissioner Gar.
Aye.
Commissioner Iverson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Moore. Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Swarting.
I'm sorry, my computer died, so I am so sorry. I don't know what I'm doing. I I just just came back. Close the meeting.
Closing the meeting. Vice Chair Moore.
Aye.
Commissioner Stenzlin, aye. Officially close tonight's meeting, moved. Thank you all.
Aye.
I know it'll get better.